Okay, why don't we go ahead and call the meeting to order?
Joe Becker.
Here.
Andy Bertram, here. Dan Kader.
Here.
Scott Gergen.
Here.
Lisa Hadeen.
Here.
Russ Roloff.
Here.
Vince O'Brien.
Here.
Superintendent Collins.
Here. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? We'll get to the recognition quick. We have a motion to approve the minutes from March 30th?
I'll move. Motion.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes passed. We have a motion to approve the bills payable.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve charitable contributions for the third quarter?
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion besides a tremendous amount of gratitude to all the people and all the businesses for all this stuff? Helps a lot. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And our quarterly review of the student activities accounts.
Make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, really good stuff.
Great part of the board meeting is always when we get to the employee of the semester because we get to hear the great things that are said about our employees. It goes through a selection process in a committee so not only are you nominated but you've gone through a committee process for employee of the semester as well. And we've also got baby night here tonight as well, so that's a first in a long time. But we like babies in the Hastings School District, so we're good with that. But I'll ask, when I introduce the employee to come up, I'll read what others have said about you so they're in front of the camera. Board member will give you your plaque and then a nice gift that you get from Intech as well because they help to sponsor this, so thank you to Intech. And then if you want to say something, you can, and if you don't want to say anything, you don't have to. So with that, Marcia Ettl, come on up.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And this is what people have to say about you. Special services teacher at Hastings Middle School. Marcia Ettl is an asset to the special services umbrella professionals who work in concert at the middle school. She manages one of the most challenging case loads in Hastings Public Schools. The rosters of students whose behaviors require redirection, support, and above all, patience. Her ability to craft quality instruction to former students in five subjects spanning all grade levels at Hastings Middle School is an envious gift. She's a reminder to me that we work to educate the whole child and we have a great opportunity to shape the future of our community, state, country, continent, and the world. Congratulations. Ann Henning, who's very familiar to the school board, come on up. Fourth grade teacher at McCullough Elementary. Ann Henning is an exceptional teacher and outstanding all-around employee. She puts others first, volunteers, and serves on many important committees. She was the chair of the McCullough RTI Committee for a number of years. She's the type of person who works tirelessly for whatever needs to be done and is compassionate with students and staff alike. Her positive attitude is contagious and lifts up everyone around her. McCullough won't be the same without her.
Quick something to say because I usually have to sit here and be quiet. So, a coach was once asked, he was starting his third string quarterback, and they asked him, "How's he gonna do, coach? He's going in the national championship game, third string quarterback." And he said, "He's gonna do awesome. He has so much talent around him, and that's why I'm here, is the talent around me." So, thank you very much.
Patty Kleis.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you.
Can't forget that.
Patty, special services professional at McCullough Elementary, and this is what some staff members have to say about you. She's an incredible asset to our special ed team at McCullough. Every single day she goes above and beyond the call of duty. Even though she's assigned a specific student to work with each day, she is able to make every child feel special. She is eager to help with whatever is needed. Patty gives new meaning to the word patience. Even when she's working in a challenging situation, she is always able to keep her calm to meter. In addition, Patty is able to make students accountable but does so in a caring way which isn't always the easiest thing to do. I needed you when I was raising my kids.[346.53][346.53](laughter) But she manages to do this all with great ease and love. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Tom Cannol.
You gotta be Randy's brother.
Pardon me?
You gotta be Randy's brother.
Yes, I'm Randy's brother, yes.
Tom Cannol has been with the Hastings Public Middle School for 15 years. For many of those years, he's been one of the people who is charged with working outside during the spring, summer, and fall months to keep the grounds for the district looking in shipshape. Working outside all day might seem like a great job, but Tom, working outside all day, every day, might sound like a great job, but Tom takes his job very seriously. Bushes need to be trimmed, grass mowed, and while being outside can sound rather enjoyable, the days can be very hot, and yet Tom still does a great job of making sure that everything looks great and that we look great as a school district. Thank you. Kathy O'Keefe, special services teacher at JFK Elementary. Kathy has a very genuine and thoughtful approach towards students and their needs, and she truly cares about the whole child. She is masterful at teasing out the core issues behind behaviors that are causing students difficulty in school. This skill is incredibly helpful in determining interventions that will help them become more successful in the classroom setting. Kathy has always been a team player and is willing to lend a hand and her expertise whenever and wherever it is needed. Kathy is truly a great teacher and an asset to our district.
I will take the podium here. I am one of those lucky people that at the age of 14, I discovered what it is I wanted to do with my life and how lucky that I got to do it. And I honestly have loved going to work every day. And when it gets to be about August, it's like, let us get going here. These kids probably need to get back to school. So, that's so fortunate that I found my profession. So, and I also want to say, like Ann said, I only look good because my PSAs around me are looking good, and that reflects on all of us. So, that's just fortunate for all of us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And Carol Patterson, custodian at Hastings Middle School. As a member of the maintenance team for the school district, Carol has worked at a number of school sites, but she is currently a part of the middle school team, and we are so lucky to have her. Carol is one of the most conscientious people you could ask for. She is always approachable when you need something, and she does an outstanding job and takes great pride in her work. There is no one else I would like to work with more than Carol. She is a team player, and her commitment to doing a good job is unmatched.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And we really thank the employees of the semester taking their time to come here this evening. Your time is very precious. Everything that you do for us is very greatly appreciated. And if you want to stay around for an exciting schoolwork, then you can, but if you want to go outside and play with your children or move on, feel free to do so. Thank you very much. You know what? Leave.
Ann? Does this make him Urban Meyer?
Who is that?
No, well, yeah, this guy?
Yes.
Really?
I'll take that.
Okay, what happened in Florida, didn't it? Okay, so next up, we're pleased to have the superintendent's report.
That's a short report. I just wanted to update you as board members. Kim and I are moving forward. We bid out our district copy release, and I wanted to just let you know that it's not something that we bring to board action, but it's a very good bid again, and it's $8,000 less than it had been previously bid at, so very good news, and thanks to Kim for...
Jen is very happy to have you here.
Okay, thanks to Kim and Jen.
She's all in.
Okay, for the follow-through on this. Facility concerns, I just want to let you know that our facility, it's, I don't want to say ironic, but our facility committee has been meeting for the last six months to start talking about facility concerns. And then, no more than we come out of our last work session, and I've probably had five or six community members calling me about different facility issues, whether it be boosters willing to donate in some situations, or some concerns of facilities that need improvement. So again, because we're on Hastings Cable Television, I just want to let the community know that as a school board and superintendent, we're continually analyzing and looking at our facilities, and we're definitely getting geared up to have a very serious look again at our facilities and our issues. And I just wanted to share with you because I was sent a photo of our facility concerns. I know these aren't going to be exciting, but two of the photos up are some tennis court issues that have now surfaced, pardon the pun. But you can see the size of the cracks up at our high school tennis courts, and of course, in Minnesota. What happens is last year, in the fall, those cracks were very minimal, and then the winter and the impact of that. So, we definitely are getting some bids to get those fixed. Steve Vans did submit some bids to Kim and I today to get them fixed yet in May. But then, again, to bring attention not only to you as a board but to the community as well because this is taped, the high school tennis courts aren't new anymore. We think they're new because they're at the new high school site, but in a lot of cases, the average life expectancy of a tennis court is around 20 years, and we're soon going to be near 2017. So, eventually that will become part of our overall in-depth analysis as well, so I just wanted to take the time to share with you that we are going to get those fixed. You may have heard about it. I know that some of you are tennis players yourself, and so you maybe hear from the Tennis Association, so I wanted, because it was convenient at this board meeting, to let you know about that. Joe?
The joints, you're correcting the joints, you mean?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and I met yesterday morning with the Hastings Tennis Association. They're looking at potentially adding some youth lines on two of the courts. They've talked to our coaches, they've talked to Tom Johnson, and I just shared with them that I want to let them know that we're going to be fixing the cracks. I don't know how much money they want to give to paint those lines if within three to four to five years, we might have to redo the entire tennis court. So I've had that discussion with them as well. So, go ahead.
It's like the normal high school roof, though.
Yes. Yes, same with the high school roof. We all know that the life expectancy of that roof was 15 years. It's now going beyond that, so those are all things that we as a board are looking at as well. The next item, technology director. I just wanted to share with you that I have no news of where that's at. I'm still contemplating how we should be structured with Melanie Haugen retiring. We as a district had a great situation for almost a decade where she was able to wear dual hats, but with the expanding needs of technology, we're definitely going to have to look for some combination of a job there. I don't know if it'll be technology director or what it will be. So I really just wanted to let you know that we had talked about this in a work session, and I don't really have that figured out yet, the direction that we will go. But we definitely, she's going to be retiring here in six weeks, so we definitely have to come up with a plan in relatively next two months or so. But you also know that I don't rush into anything, that we have great people internally as well, and Melanie has done a great job, and Melanie's not going to Europe. She'll be right down the road, and she'll be available, and she'll be willing to help us out in some situations as well. So, I'm going to continue to slowly walk into that restructuring of what it might be. Then luncheon with high school seniors. I just wanted to let board members know that in other years, we had had an end-of-the-year luncheon with high school seniors. At this time, I'm moving away from the luncheon just due to some of the auditing of what we've had for lunches. I still might pull together a meeting with seniors, so to speak, as an exit interview, but it probably won't be structured around a lunch, so I'm still working with Mike Johnson on would students still come to a meeting with board members and Tim Collins, just have an exit interview, so to speak. But I know that board members who have sat on that have found it very valuable, and in 99% of the situations, we hear a lot of positive feedback about our staff and how caring they've been, and about the level of education that they have received from the Hastings School District and all the employees from kindergarten on up. So, that maybe was on your calendar at one time, but I told Deanna we should not have it over a luncheon for this year, so I'll be getting back to you on that. And with that, ready for the action items?
The high school senior thing, maybe I should bring this up not when we're on TV, but...
Bring it up.
Because of the policy that we've been getting ready and implementing, we're going to talk about tonight, we're so restricted in what we can do. But I wonder for this one, if we could come up with a way where each board member who is attending pays for their lunch and the lunch of the student. So you have seven, you know, and it wouldn't be that much, you know, it'd be like a burrito from Chipotle or something.
That's an excellent idea.
Yeah, so maybe we should pursue that as a...
Okay.
And I don't think that violates the policy.
No.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yep.
Sorry.
They're going to kill me later. No. Vince is good. Yeah. No, we're not really about that, so...
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve Friday, June 3rd, as the last day of school for seniors?
I'll motion. I have a senior.
Why is motion?
I was waiting for you.
I was already told, so...
I was waiting for one of you to...
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Motion to approve the second reading of Policy 421, which I just alluded to, the staff recognition, which is an awkward name for it, since it's all about the opposite of Does anybody want us to read it out loud or want to make a motion to...
I'll make the motion with the reading waived.
Second, Pat, waiver.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Deanna, motion to approve the Anderson Lad bid for the high school gym project at $143,639.
And originally, our rough estimates were approximately $200,000, and that's to resurface all of the gym courts up at the high school. Also, there's a section of the northwest corner of the track where probably eight to 10 years ago now, water had come underneath that fire indoor, and that part of the running track is rotten because if you've been on there at all, it's super spongy. So part of it is to rip out, hopefully, 600 square feet only, and that that's all that the damage is. And so, the bid process, it came in very good. We're very happy about the bid process, a big project this summer because you know how much activity takes place in our gym over the summer months. But also, I want to make sure that the board recognizes that there are some options in there because if it has to go more than 600 square feet, it's going to cost more than this. And I think anybody who's done a home remodeling project or a business remodeling project, once you get into it, if there is more damage. But again, a very good bid, and we're going to get going right away in the summer with it, and hopefully, it'll be less than 600 square feet.
I'll motion.
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up, motion to approve, in all caps, resolution, awarding the sale, determining the form details, authorizing execution, delivery, and registration, and providing for the payment of general obligations, school building, and funding bonds, Series 2016A. And I would guess that we have...
Yeah, Kelly, we didn't even talk before this, but Kelly Smith is here from Springstead. Kelly Smith had also been a superintendent at Red Wing. He's been a superintendent to Belle Plaine. He's been the MASA president, and then he transitioned over to the dark side of financing. So, Kelly, I don't know if you just want to give a real quick, short recap?
Sure. First of all, thanks for letting me be here tonight. And Springstead has been your financial advisor for a number of years, and we thank you for the opportunity to serve in that capacity. A while back, we proposed to Tim and Kim that we looked at refunding this set of bonds for two purposes. One, for interest savings, as rates have been very good. The second is, these are Build America bonds, and there's a federal tax credit, and through the sequestration process, couple of years, the credit was reduced, and there's always the risk that additional reductions would happen in the future. So, the second piece was to remove any future reductions in credits by getting rid of these Build America bonds. The district went through a rating process, as it always happens before a bond sale, and Moody's reaffirmed the district's strong AA3 credit rating. And kudos to you as a school board and to Tim and Kim as well for this really creating a strong financial position for the district, and that's borne out with the strong credit rating, and every good rating helps with bids on issues such as this, and we saw the results of that today. We had a very competitive sale today. We had five bidders who all bid below what we had projected a month ago, so, and a very tight bid. We had projected a true interest cost of 2.02% a month ago, and today, the low bid with United Bankers Bank is at 1.72%. So, those are great rates, and obviously, these are shorter-term bonds in a smaller amount, so rates are pretty low, but we're just in a great market right now for refinancing. Overall, a net savings for the district is $203,000 over the remaining life of these new bonds. And again, we had, and that's about 8.1% savings. We had estimated $155,000 or 6% savings. So, very good, very good sale indeed for the district. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have a resolution in front of you. And lastly, I'd like to thank Kim and Tim for their work throughout this process. They have got a lot of materials ready for the official statements and so on, and they were very timely with all this, and so thanks to them.
And we all know that he gave me some credit, but I do absolutely zero that, and Kim does. I sit in on the very stimulating Moody rating phone conference call, but Kim does all the legwork on all the paperwork, and it is a lot of, lot of legwork, so thank you, Kim. But yeah, as Kelly said, it's always good when you make some projections, and you never know till the day and the time, are you going to get interested bidders or not. And I do agree with Kelly that because we do have a very strong rating, that creates even more interest. So, for those watching, $203,000 in savings is a lot of money. So, it's good that we can save our taxpayers that amount of money over the life of the bonds, so we're definitely recommending to continue moving forward.
I want to give Kim and even you, even though you don't deserve it, credit for, because we had a good deal. We had a good deal on the bonds that we had, but it's good that you keep an eye out there for you had a better deal, you know? $200,000, like you say, is $203,000 is a lot of money.
Thank you. And like you said, that's a good point. We're very fortunate that we had good planning and were able to get those bonds and our community supported as well to begin with because we all know that was a great deal at great timing when the economy was entering recession. We got a lot done.
Okay, this is a roll call vote, but I think we need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Joe Becker.
Yes.
Andy Bertram, yes. Dan Kader.
Yes.
Scott Gergen.
Yes.
Lisa Hadeen.
Yes.
Russ Roloff.
Yes.
Vince O'Brien.
Yes.
And next up, we have some retirements.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Many thanks for all the years of service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and a number of leaves.
I'll make the motion, I'm always.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And we're hiring a number of people.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Reassignment of a middle school secretary to a different class.
I'll motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And an increase in FTEs for the speech and language position at middle school.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And next up is a motion to approve a resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of probationary teachers.
And I just want to make the comment that, I've shared this before, I don't like the word termination because many times, the situation is where the individual, we're non-renewing their position because when we hired them in the beginning, we told them it was a mid-year hire, so we're going to non-renew them. It might be the case that we have low-class sizes at a certain grade level, so I just want to make sure that when the public sees this as a motion item, in many, many cases, it's not due to job performance, it's due to the restructuring of how we operate. And having said that, all of these come through the recommendation from principals as we look to restructure for the 2016-2017 school year.
You need the motion in a second?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Joe Becker.
Yes.
Andy Bertram, yes. Dan Kader.
Yes.
Scott Gergen.
Yes.
Lisa Hadeen.
Yes.
Russ Roloff.
Yes.
Vince O'Brien.
Yes. And the last order of business is the, we're at that time of year where all the high school awards, employee retirement and recognition program dates are, oh wait, I guess we don't know the high school awards program.
We know the date, we don't know the time.
Oh, okay. Well, I suppose that hinges on whatever we're going to do for snack or separate.
Would you have that one covered? That one is being paid by somebody else.
Okay.
And for new board members, you know, sometimes you look at and say, is this something I go to or is this something I don't go to? The employee retirement recognition program is four o'clock in the afternoon on that Wednesday. I would say that most... I would say that most years, we get six out of the seven in attendance at that. The high school awards program, it can range anywhere from two board members being able to attend that to five board members, just to give you a feel. Not saying that you shouldn't go to it, but if, just to let you know what some of our past practice has been. And then, a no-other work session on May 11th, Tom Johnson is going to be coming to that work session. He'll be one of the main components of the work session, and if you have any specific questions that you would like him to bring numbers or data on, Tom is, as you know, very good at keeping years and years of data to analyze it. So, I also told Tom that as a school board, we want to hear the pluses and minuses of that work session on what he would give us, some recommendations. And who knows, Tom might say, hey, I've done a great job here. I've got no recommendations for improvement, but definitely, that's what I want from that portion of the work session on May 11th.
For sure, we're going to ask him about turf versus grass. The ageless debate.
And he's prepared.
Yeah.
Do we anticipate that we will be here, as opposed to add a...
I think it might be community, but I'm not 100%. I have to double-check with Mary O'Brien. Yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.